We're calling a meeting to order now. Please listen for our invocation and for the President. To the Maker of the heaven and the earth, we thank you for this precious day. We thank you for another opportunity to serve. We ask you to be in this meeting to lead and guide us that the decisions that we make will be those that's best for the citizens of Florence, that citizens in this city will be a great part of the Republic. You're welcome to this meeting to guide us today. Amen.
I have very pleased to the light from the United States of America and to the Republicans who stand for our nation, our God, and individual liberty and justice of all.
At this time, we do have an addendum. Let's take a look. The addendum is for appearance before council.
Turn to your room.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion in the second for the approval for the addendum for councilman Frank J. Buddy Brand to, when the Florence County Council to appear before today. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like sign. Let it be known that the addendum has passed. At this time, we will have approved of our minutes. We have minutes from April the 23rd, 2021 for our planning retreat. Minutes from May attempt 2021 special for a regular meeting. Then May the 13th, 2021, a special meeting, and then May 18th, 2021, a work session. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? If not, you're ready for the question of response. All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. Let it reflect the minutes have been approved. At this time, we were moved to open for a public hearing. The first public hearing which will be opened now is a public hearing that will be held to receive input on the City of Florence's fiscal year budget from 2021 to 2022. Seeing that we have no one to speak upon that portion, we're not closing the public hearing. Next, we will open the public hearing is a public hearing that's being held to receive input on adoption of an ordinance title, a second supplemental ordinance providing for the issuance and sales of City of Florence, South Carolina, Stonewater System Reverend Bond Series 2021 in the principal amount of not exceeding $7 million and other matters related there to. Do you have any comments or anyone to speak upon this? If not, we will call the public hearing to a close. Next, we will have appearance before council. First, we have Miss Reverend Leo Woodbury. And assisting here will be Mr. Loretta Slater to share with the council information regarding potential funding opportunity with the federal government as well as information regarding pending legislation the city may benefit from. Reverend Leo Woodbury.
And now he is just provided at the floor. Because of some visual issues of that, we'll read a statement and then I'm introducing the law. If that is okay with the council. Thank you for this opportunity to share information and agree to on some very crucial matters.
Madam Mayor, Council, New Albert CDC is partnering, partnering organization, the William Slater Foundation, Kingdom Living Temple Church, would like to share the following information with the city regarding federal policy and funding opportunities around the issue of climate infrastructure and the environment. Background information. Members of our organization have been working on the aforementioned issue for up to 30 years. We have partnership with international, national, regional, and state organizations. We have participated in United Nations Council of Partners, convening in Madrid, Poland, international organizations, organizations from 120 countries and 1,300 NGOs nonprofits in Costa Rica and Tanzania. On a national level, we work with several organizations, two of which does international work as well. We interact with combined total of hundreds of organizations nationally. Recently, we partnered with the Southeast Climate Energy Network, specifically with 70 organizations. And statewide, we have worked with South Carolina GEA and the SC Office of Regulatory Services. Since 2014, we are part of the team that wrote the SC five-year energy plan. Current, in 2019, we funded to, we were funded to work with four organizations in the southeast to put together Southern Community Green New Deal Platform with policy recommendations. This is one of the reasons why we have had more than a dozen meetings with federal agencies in the White House in the last few months. We will continue to have meetings with additional federal agencies and the environmental justice inter-agency working groups. The purpose of these meetings is to share information and to give recommendations particularly for President Biden's Justice 40 Initiative. This initiative and executive order directs every federal agency to allocate 40% of their sustainable investment to community. Specifically, we are working with the Biden administration initiative called the Justice 40. The Justice 40 Initiative will direct grants, resources, and support directly to community-based organizations. So we would like to announce today that New Albert Community Development Corporation, the William Slater Foundation, Kingdom Living Temple, along with its partners from the South Carolina Environmental Justice Network, will be forming a community-based organization stakeholders group. We will be establishing one in the City of Florence and across the PV. The ask, we have come together before the City Council of Florence with only one ask. We're asking the city to position itself as a governing body so that they are better positioned, so they are better positioned to possibly receive funding from both the federal and state governments. We feel the city can do this within a four-pronged framework that we share with each council member, except for Councilman Brian Bragg and William Stokfield, who were not serving on the council at the time. Regarding our community economic and development for the City of Florence, the four-pronged positioning should include, in our opinion, a minority business development agreement, community benefits agreement, a fair share agreement, a commission or board to work sustainability and resilience issue from litigation and adaptation approach. This is our first recommendation and ask. Our second recommendation and ask, the other, the City of Florence, establish ongoing meeting where information is shared with the New Albert CDC, its partners, and community-based shareholder groups. Thank you very much for this opportunity to share this information with you. In your folders are President Biden's executive order, a synopsis of the Southern Communities for a Green New Deal, and additional information. We look forward to working with you even closer in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And as we said, the Justice 40 Initiative, which the White House just released last Thursday, we've been closely working with them, and that has just dropped its actual application that are going around the country now to assist community-based organizations in receiving funding from the federal government directly. So we're talking about some of this money will go to states, some will go to county and cities, but some of the money will be going directly to community-based organizations. And it's our desire to make sure that our community-based organizations are well-positioned to receive this funding. This is where hoping that the City of Florence will be well-positioned to receive funding too that will help us on climate, infrastructure, and environmental justice issue. Now, we asked to present early because we actually have a meeting at 2:00 with the Federal Environmental Justice Inter-Agency Working Group, which is every federal agency. And so we'll be having a Zoom call with them. So basically, what we want to do is recommend that the City of Florence take actions that will better position the city, that we'll have, you know, we're willing to have some more detailed discussion about that. And also that we have a continuing relationship so that we can continue to share information with the city. I think right now, we've had our 12th or 13th meeting with different federal agencies, including CEQ, the Council of Environmental Quality, which is a part of the White House. And so we want to thank you for this opportunity to present. And what we feel is going to be one of the greatest historical movements for change in this country. We're talking about changing our infrastructure. We're talking about changing the way that we do, that we generate energy. We're talking about putting in place economic engines of development in communities, and we hope that we can work closely with you. If there are any questions, we'll try our best to entertain them at this time.
Thank you Reverend Woodbury for your presentation. Do the council have any questions? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. And we need to depart, but as I said, we have a call that's coming up. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. And at this time, we have an exit. County Councilman, Councilman Frank J. Buddy Brand will give them a moment to exit.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm from the government and I'm here to help. That's weird to say that, isn't it? As a governor. It's like all home week. I look out here and I see all these people I worked with for 15 years. It's good to see all y'all. I'm not gonna take much of your time. I'm not here for one reason. First of all, let me congratulate William and Brian on your election. Last time I was here was right after I was elected to make some comments. But I'm here to hold out a fig leaf or what kind of leaf you want to call it to from the county. We are here because in the past history of our town and county, we have not worked nearly close enough together. And it's our goal, the county's goal, that's got to happen. If we're not, if we're gonna, if we don't work together, we're gonna move further and further backwards in the region where we are. We cannot let that happen. It's time to put that history behind us and move forward from an economic development viewpoint, from a school district viewpoint, from a medical hospital viewpoint, from the quality of life viewpoint, and just for communication viewpoint. And I'm here to tell you that the county and I personally will work with y'all in any way I can to make that happen. It's got to happen, and that's one reason that I personally moved from the city to the county because we needed somebody in the city side to understand. And believe you me, every meeting, I make sure they understand. We'll see how all that goes, but it will go. And I'm here to do what each one of you need. If I can help you with individual districts that you're in, please call me or call one of the other councils when you feel friendly with. Obviously, Ms. Barnes, you have a connection there that can help you out pretty good, which will be great. But seriously, it's already working. We've injected money on the roads into the system since I've been on there. We've also worked, Randy Ossman with the fire department, with the fire hydrants. There's work going on there that has been kind of cast aside that really needs to happen, and it's already happening. And our council is very much aware of what's going on with the city, and we feel like it's already started. Economic development wise, that's the main thing. We have got to continue to push that. And the county has got bonds over $20 million. We've already put out there to buy land, build buildings, and we've got two major projects underway right now. One on the east, one on the west, that we are gonna, you'll be reading more and more about, and that's for employment. We got to have it. We got to work together, just like Charleston and Myrtle Beach, their county and city councils work together. If you don't, we cannot survive like we are now. So with that, I'm out of here, but any questions or comments from y'all? My phone number, y'all all know it. If you don't, Randy, Casey, they can give it to you. Just give me a call. But congratulations to all of you and keep downtown moving forward also because it's looking good and it makes me happy. Anything I can answer a question about?
I do see. It is to you. It's different having you on that side speaking to Buddy, but you know, I believe that everything happens for a reason. And I think if you were served, you'd be a great bridger between the city and county. And I do know that because you've had those years here on the city, you will always be a resource to the city as well. So thank you in advance for all that you will do and what you are doing now. And at this time, is there any questions to state from the council?
Thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it all of you. Thank you very much. Good luck and keep up the good work.
We're now moving to our portion of our agenda, which is our ordinance and positions. And we have now for our second reading will be Bill Number 2021-11. And that ordinance is an ordinance to end it next, end zone parcels located at 2499 Rainforest Road, identified as Florence County Tax Map Partial 01221-01-158. And that is a portion being Windsor Forest. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been properly motion and seconded. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, aye. And opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed. Next is Bill Number 2021-13 for separate reading. This is an ordinance to amend the planned development district for growth at Ebenezer. And it's then motion. Do we have a second? It's the proper motion is second. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, please signify by aye. All those opposed like sign. Let it reflect that the bill has passed. Next, we will have introduction of ordinance done by Mr. Jerry Dudley. I will call Jerry Dudley for. First, we have Bill Number 2021-12 for first reading. And this bill, if you note on your agenda, has been deferred. So we will move until the next bill, which will be Bill Number 2021-14 for first reading. And it's an ordinance to annex end zone parcel located at 2495 Popmyer Road, identified as Florence County Tax Map Partial Number 01221-01-109. Do we have a motion? So we have a motion and second. Okay, we can now hear from Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, for letting us present that committee. This property is located at 2495 Popmyer Road. And it is the site of a single-family residential structure. And the current, it is currently unzoned in the county. The surrounding zoning is neighborhood conservation 15. Here's a image of the structure. And Planning Commission did recommend unanimously to zone this NC 15 at the May meeting. And this concludes staff report.
We've had a motion and a second to refer to report. Are you ready? Is there any discussion? Ready for the question? All those in favor, please signify by aye. Any opposed like sign. Let it reflect that Bill Number 2021-14 has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill Number 2021-15 for first reading. It's an ordinance to annex end zone 2504 Abbey Way, 25113 Abbey Way, and 2485 Parsons Gate, and 2502 Parsons Gate identified as Florence County Tax Map Partial Number 01221-01-254. And all of others as listed too. Do we have a second? It's the proper motion is second. And at this time, we can hear a report from Mr. Dudley.
Thank you. These properties are located in the rear of Windsor Forest, and they, they all came in as a single annexation. They all petitioned together. They are all requesting the zoning of NC 15. They are surrounded by NC 15, and all city water sewer utilities are available at these locations. All residents are already booked on. I do have a few images of the structures. They're all single-family detached homes. And Planning Commission did recommend unanimously to zone all of the blocks NC 15.
You've heard a report. Any discussion? If you're ready for the question, all those in favor signify by aye. Next time, may, let it reflect that Bill Number 2021-15 has passed. Next, we have, next we have Bill Number 2021-16 for first reading. An ordinance to annex end zone parcel located at 3136 Piscopo Road, identified on Florence County Tax Map Partial Number 00097-01-29. Do we have a motion? So, is the motion is second. We can have our report from Mr. Dudley.
Thank you. This property is located along Piscopo Road. It is adjacent to some fairly recent annexations in that area, including future Piscopo Point subdivision, and this directly adjacent piece of property is the future Piscopo Point subdivision. It is currently zoned RG3. The proposed zoning for the structure is also RG3, single-family residential zoning designation. And it does currently have a single-family home there. City water is available. City sewer is currently not available at that location. The applicant is not requesting city sewer at this time. They have signed a sewer release form. And however, they would be required to tap on to city sewer within five years of it being available through the site. I believe that's right. Yes, within five years, they would have to connect by city ordinance. And it is going to be potentially available with the development of this larger tract at some point in the future. So, but the applicant is currently seeking annexation primarily for the purpose of getting a water tap to that home. So Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend the zoning request of RG3, and this concludes staff report.
Do you have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed like sign. Let it reflect that Bill Number 2021-16 has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill Number 2021-17 for first reading. It's an ordinance, an ordinance to rezon from NC 6.2 to CBD. The lots at 113 and 115 East Pine Street and 319 and 321. Avenue identified on Florence Tax Map Parcels. And this photograph, that's 90087-06-01, 987-06-2002, 987-06-05, and 987-06-06. Do we have a second? It's the proper motion is second. We can now hear from Mr. Dudley.
Thank you. The four parcels proposed for rezoning are currently zoned NC 6.2, and the proposed zoning is CBD, which is our central business district. These lots are currently city-owned, and they are proposed for a, we're working on a conditional agreement with a private developer to construct townhome units that are intended for homeownership. This is part of our neighborhood revitalization work that's going on in East Florence. And the proposed zoning would allow this development to occur. And you can see here that the central business district engulfs much of this block already, and this just adds to the CBD. The CBD is here kind of in the pinkish color, so it is in agreement with adjacent zoning in this area. And Planning Commission did vote unanimously seven to zero to recommend this zoning request. And here are a few images of the property. All of the proposed parcels are currently vacant, and the rezoning, or I'm sorry, the design concept for the townhome development has already been to the design review board as well and passed there as well. And we're working forward with that conditional grant agreement with the applicant or with the private company. And this concludes staff's report.
You've heard the report. Is there a discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by aye. Let it reflect that Bill Number 2021-17 has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill Number 2021-18 for first reading. It's an ordinance to declare Florence County Tax Parcels Number 960-05-14 and 960-06-008 as surplus and authorize the transfer of land to the Desolate Development Group. Do we have a motion? So, do we have a second?
Second.
So we can hear from Mr. Dudley at this time?
Thank you. The two parcels in question are located at 806 and 708 Gladstone. The city was, these are part of the lands assimilated up in the western portion of Florence. And they were intended to have single-family homes on them at some point in the future. The city was approached by the Desolate Development Group, which has a track record in Florence of constructed single-family homes along Gladstone Street. There are two that have been constructed and a third one that's currently under construction. All three of those have gone in, or two of them, I guess thus far, have gone into homeownership status. And the third one is intended for that. They are affiliated with a church group, and they do try to place individuals into homeownership. And again, the city was approached to purchase these lots. It fits, they have the track record of doing so, and it fits into the neighborhood revitalization strategy of enticing private developers. And as such, city staff obviously recommends the conveyance of these, and they are purchasing these parcels. And one is vacant, and one currently has a dilapidated home on it, which the purchaser will demolish before construction. And this concludes staff's report.
Is there any discussion?
What's the purchase? I'm sorry. What's the purchase price on that?
Sure. The 708 Gladstone, which is the double lot, is $6,400. And the 806 Gladstone, which has the dilapidated structure on it, is $4,000. And it'll take a fair sum of money just to tear down the structure.
Is there any other discussion? If not, we've had a motion. If you can, all those in favor, please signify by aye. Bill Number 2021-16 has passed first reading. Next, we have Bill Number 2021-19 for first reading. And we have Mr. Kevin Yogi Force. This is an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt the budget for the City of Florence, South Carolina for this four-year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Some.
Do we have a second? Proper motion second. You can now be from the seat.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and members of council, you have the foreview this afternoon. The ordinance to approve the budget for the year starting July 1, 2021, and getting through 30, 2022. This is the same budget that was presented to council at the May 18th budget work session that was reviewed with council at that time. So staff, it's staff recommendation that council go ahead and approve this ordinance for first reading.
Do we have any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by aye. Let it reflect that Bill Number 2021-19 has passed first reading.
Thank you. I just would like to commend staff. I know it's a challenging year when you have shortfalls in income and you have expenditures that are going up and revenues going down. Trying to make that work is quite a challenge. And so I just commend all of the staff that work so diligently to come up with a budget that that works and meets Randy's worth. Thank you.
Is there any other thoughts? If not, we will move on to our next bill, which is bill number twenty twenty one dash twenty for first read. A second supplement audit is providing for the insurance and sales of city of Florence, South Carolina. Strongwater system revenue bond series twenty twenty one. In the principal amount of not exceeding seven million dollars and other matters related to there to. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We can now hear from Mr. Yocum and our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I turn it over to Mr. Yocum, I just wanted to provide you an update. As we met for our budget workshop, as we were discussing the stormwater, the mayor pro tem made a recommendation. Council seemed to be in agreeance that the city commenced with a citywide stormwater study, if you will. We've done some preliminary investigation into that potential. You know, we are estimating that the project, that a stormwater study project will last about three years. And we're cost approximately five hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're also confident that the first year that we can, we can cover the expense in the existing budget as it's being presented to you today. So an additional or separate resolution or something along that line is not required, just for your consideration of this one. So I will now turn that over to Mr. Yocum. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Mayor and council, before you this afternoon, you have an ordinance to approve stormwater bond in the amount not exceeding seven million dollars. Now, there may be some question as to why that bond was set at that amount or the ordinance reads as such. Several months ago, a list of projects was presented to council in the amount of six point six million dollars, a little bit more than that, for future projects over the next fifteen years. Like you will recall, the discussion we held at the budget work session last month, there was some discussion on the size of that bond and whether or not to increase the stormwater fee. And since the bond was up for public hearing today, it made more sense to go ahead and put it not exceeding seven million dollars. And if council wanted to reduce the amount to the four million dollar amount as discussed at the budget work session, we would certainly do that today. And that is indeed staff's recommendation based on what we're hearing from council. That makes a lot more sense than to have a public hearing and say you're going to issue four million dollars bonds and then come back a meeting later and say, no, it's actually going to be seven after you've already had the public hearing. It's a lot easier to do the other. So as was discussed at the budget work session, and indeed, the budget ordinance that was just passed first reading does not include the stormwater fee increase as was discussed at the budget work session. So even though the title of this ordinance says not exceeding seven million dollars, the current staff plan and recommendation is to issue bonds in the amount of four million dollars plus enough to cover the cost of issuance for the bond, which would include our financial advisor fee and our bond council fee. And in fact, with this this afternoon, we have Charlton Destasur. Some of you are familiar with him. Some of you may not have met him. He is the city's longtime bond counsel from the Charleston office of the Department of Innswood, Sainte-Boise. If you have any questions for Mr. Destasur, he's certainly happy to answer them. But he wanted to be here just in case you needed his consultation this afternoon. And then concludes staff's report.
Thank you. And we have a motion in second. We vote for this session up to you. Chair recognizes pro tem.
Thank you very much for the report. Appreciate that, Governor, and appreciate the way that the staff has incorporated the comments of council that there's, does not appear to be an appetite to want to raise any fees at this time. And I, and I think that was came through pretty loud and clear. My question is with the way that it's worded. And I don't know, Charlton, if you need to respond to it again in terms of how it's worded and to make sure that there's not a discrepancy in there somehow. I know staff intends the application of the process to follow, to keep that at the four million plus or minus. But we have two attorneys here on behalf of the city. I'll let y'all pick who wants to comment.
I'll make one comment as Mr. Destasur is coming. Our financial advisor firm, First Tryon, out of Charlotte, has already issued a request for proposal for these bonds to the various financial institutions. In anticipation of these events, we asked them to issue it in two ways. One, not exceeding seven million dollars, and a second, quote, not exceeding four and a half million dollars. And just to make the banks aware that the definite probability exists that we'll be issuing just over four million dollars and not the seven million.
Would we need to amend the, and I guess that's my question, does the language of the proposal need to be amended somehow to go with the four and a half? Thanks for the very good question. On page two of the ordinance.
Okay, we're talking about the seven million and the four.
Yes.
But no place, the public needs to know that with the seven million, there will be an increase in their bill, the fifty cents per month. We just recently didn't want it bill increased. And it's all sounds good, but we start getting these phone calls saying, why is my neighborhood still flooding? And they're not one on that list. That's going to create a problem. We need to be very open with the public and let them know what this seven million actually includes. It doesn't include everything. It doesn't include the entire city of Florence. Only the, only the list that was presented to us that. We have to be open with the public so they'll know exactly what they're in for. People already calling about their water bill is higher than it was before. And with this, with this, it doesn't sound like a lot, but for some people, that's almost a meal. And we need to let be inform them of what we're talking about. Be very open. Otherwise, they can have the problem.
I'll let Mr. Destasur answer Pro James' comment, then I'll respond to the count.
On that page two, it's the paragraph number, letter C, which says the mayor is authorized to determine the aggregate principal amount of the bond. And that aggregate, that principal amount is to be set forth in a certificate to be signed by the mayor. And the reason for that approach was because the discussion was in a range. And the upper part of the range would be authorized, but the ordinance would require the exact number to be certified by the mayor when all the information is.
So what I understand you to say is that the paragraph C gives that parameter, but that the certificate that's going to come through is in the four and a half million dollar range, not the seven million that is in the document. And if I also understand correctly, the four and a half million will require zero increase in fees. Is that correct?
That is correct. And in fact, the amount will probably be much less than the four and a half. It'll be somewhere between the four million bond amount and four million two bond amount, which is staff's recommendation, which will not require a fee increase.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more questions?
Mayor, if I may, I think the councilwoman makes two very good points, one of which we've just addressed as staff.
Councilman, thank you.
As I've just stated, the staff recommendation is the bond amount of four million dollars plus enough to cover the cost of issuance, which will not require a fee increase. But as the councilwoman has aptly stated, the projects included on that list will not address all the stormwater issues across the city. And that is the reason why council made the count as they did at the budget work session last month. And as Mr. Osterman has stated, staff's plan is to move forward with comprehensive stormwater plan for the entire city. And that plan will take a three-year time period costing, as he has stated, five hundred fifty thousand dollars. And we have enough funding in the current, in the budget that is before you for next year to cover the first year's cost of that study.
Are there any more? Is there any more discussion? Joe, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Yocum, so much for that. At this time, we've heard our report on bill number twenty twenty one dash twenty for first reading. You may just probably motion in second. If there's no further question, we have this question. All those in favor please signify by saying I. Let it reflect that bill number twenty twenty one dash twenty has passed first read. Next, we are entering to bill number twenty twenty one dash twenty one for first reading. We have called for Mr. Sadi Dages. And it's an audit to amend chapter two of Florence City of Florence code orange flash. Adding additional section article number three to establish a state advisory committee. Do we have a motion? A motion? Do we have a second? If not, okay, we have a motion in second. We can hear from Mr. Sadi Dages at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This is an ordinance to establish an aesthetic advisory committee that will research, investigate, recommend and support a culture of stewardship, striving to develop and enhance an aesthetic environment where every neighborhood will be a place that is attractive and inviting. This is first reading. And again, this committee will try to improve and enhance Florence communities in looking at development and including ensuring that we all have an ideal environment. This bill is sponsored by Madam.
We have a motion in second. Do we have discussion? Chair recognizes councilman Braddock.
Yeah, a few things. One, you know, as I read through the vision, the vision seems to duplicate the purposes of the committee, the community development committee that we recently established by city council last month. And that was a product of our two-day planning session that we did with all members of council and several members of the city leadership team. You know, I feel like in reading this, that basically this committee would be a shift, you know, by council of our responsibility to the citizens of Florence to this committee. And we granted several, several powers that, that I haven't seen in other committees. The first is the ability of this committee to create its own ad hoc committees. As I reached out to you, that's, that's something that has the potential in some committees, but it hasn't been readily available as stated here. And my biggest concern is that these ad hoc committees would have no input from city council, you know, which creates more confusion. I believe it creates more government bureaucracy. It duplicates the current efforts of council of these, the community development committee, which I appreciate, you know, the scope of work that you deliver to us, you know, where aesthetics is important to all of us. You know, the safety and beauty of our cities, our streets, our neighborhoods, you know, that benefits economic development, you know, safety of our citizens. But in the scope of work for the community development committee, demolishing homes, painting homes, cleaning up trash and debris from Jeffries Creek. All of the things that I see that this committee could do are already things that we're currently doing. And this community development committee that we all created and supported has three members of council on. So we're taking ownership. You know, citizens have voted and elected us to take ownership of these issues. The community development committee does that. This aesthetics committee seems to circumvent that. And that's, you know, a grave concern to me that we would, that we would defer our responsibilities to a committee and then give this committee powers and scope beyond the powers and scope that we could, that we could guide, you know, in our, in our, our current positions. Now, also, the other thing that was confusing to me is, you know, I was under the understanding that we already had this type of committee, you know, chaired by Councilwoman Barnes. There's an event coming up, June twenty sixth, which is already beginning this type of work. So, you know, my biggest thing is there, there just seems to be a lot of confusion in terms of the duplication, in terms of the powers that we're creating in this new committee. And as it's written right now, I just can't support taking the responsibility encumbered to me by the citizens of Florence and then giving it to another committee and then giving them powers, responsibility, access to staff. One of the first meetings I had with the city manager was what I couldn't direct staff to do. But here I've got a, I've got a vote on a committee to give them the power to do something that I was told real quick I couldn't do. So with that being said, this is just something that, although aesthetics is very important to me, I just can't see moving forward with this as a.
Any other session of questions?
Well.
Chair recognizes councilman McCall.
I'm kind of stuck in a, in a, in a flux of this again, but I think in its entirety, the aesthetics committee is something that, it's my opinion that the ad hoc committee that Councilman Barnes is chair of now, that's with members of council. And then I'm assuming this would be an advisory board to council. So if we can, you know, I wanted to pass, believe it is in the will of council, the will of councils, I wanted to pass. So there's a, if you're saying you're just, you know, you don't want it to duplicate anything, you want it, you know, to kind of work hand in hand. Is there a way we can say that this, this aesthetics advisory committee works with the community redevelopment committee and the city manager? I mean, I think that's something that accomplishes both goals. And if you said the section C and section D. I mean, I think you can solve it all by just saying, hey, the aesthetics committee will research, investigate, recommend and support a culture of stewardship and work with, and work with the community redevelopment committee as well as the city manager. And I think that clears up any concern that you may have. Councilman Braddock about giving this, I guess, this committee too much, you know, too much leeway, basically. But I think if we're willing to add that by to work with and through the community development committee and the city manager, I think that can equate both what Madam Mayor is trying to get accomplished with her aesthetic committee as well as making sure that, you know, the council, the committee and the advisory committee is working hand in hand. And so it's not too much duplication, if you can control the confusion. So if I may, I don't know if it's appropriate time to do it. I would like to amend, make a motion to amend, to amend the motion that's coming on the floor and just add in section C and D. And also section E. So for section C and section D, just say work with and through the community redevelopment committee and the city manager. And therefore, section E, which is for the ad hoc committee portion, just say with the, you know, with the consent of the city council upon recommendation of the community committee, the new committee that we're committing today. I think that easily solves all problems that we have. We get the aesthetics advisory committee. It works hand in hand with the new community committee that's going to be appointed shortly, shortly here. I think it clears both, it helps us out both ways. And it gets it passed. Hopefully it can get it passed. If you have any concern with the writing, please let me know. But I think if that kind of encompasses what we're all trying to get accomplished today. And, and I'm assuming you're probably going to have. I'm assuming you're probably going to have, I, I might be skipping, but I'm assuming you probably just saying the same thing for both committees, because if you, if you read it, it's the exact same thing. Um, so I'm making a motion for both of them, that you just change section C and D.
We have to take, um.
One at a time, one at a time, I got you. So for this one here, everybody, I, I'm making a motion to amend to, uh, this change section C, uh, to amend section C, section D, to, uh, let it incorporate say work with and through the Community Redevelopment Committee, council and the city manager. And then for section E, um, for regarding ad hoc committees, and now so that I just out here, I get the argument, you know, um, but just with the consent of city council and upon recommendation from the, um, Community Redevelopment Committee of Council, that they are allowed to, uh, create ad hoc committees. So that's my motion.
And you have a motion.
Oh, I've heard his motion, but for clear understanding to those in the audience and those that may be watching this online, could you please tell, describe the difference between the two, the Community Development Committee and the aesthetics? What is the actual difference?
So, the Community Development Committee is a committee of, as council and Braddock stated, it's a committee of council members. Uh, that was established at last meeting. It will be three council members on that committee there. Uh, and they will be working with staff. Uh, we have, through the city manager, uh, the city manager has assigned staff persons to work with that committee. That committee will, will, uh, is charged with bringing forth policies, ideas, information to council and, and have council vote on that, and staff would execute those plans. Uh, there are three committees, as you know, uh, there, and Community Development is one of those committees. The aesthetics committee, it would be comprised of, uh, uh, of people in the public. The public, uh, each member of the council will have a chance to select a member of that committee. That committee would be an advisory committee to council. Uh, they would work, uh, in conjunction with other committees. Uh, I could see them working, uh, with planning committees, uh, our planning commission and other committees in the community to look at, at the aesthetics, how, how it looks, how we look in Florence. And they'll be charged in essence with that. Certainly, uh, it'll have a lot of the components of community development, uh, relative to improving neighborhoods, but they will also look in, in working with, again, Jerry and his group, uh, in planning and, and how the city is laid out. Uh, but they could also work with private businesses to talk about, uh, ideas of improving their businesses. They could work with, uh, Duke, our, our local energy company there. Uh, look at local sign companies and look at assigned ordinance, uh, and anything that, again, that will affect or can affect, uh, the, the beating of Florence.
Another question. Will that committee have any voting rights?
No.
Voting rights for the community development.
For, that committee is an advisory committee. As it's currently written, it's an advisory committee only. Uh, they would have the ability to advise council and make recommendations. Uh, they would not have any authority to change laws, unlike your planning commission. Even planning, they would advise council. So this committee, community, uh, again, would work as an advisor.
Are there any other discussion? Chair recognizes Councilman Braddock.
I appreciate Councilman McCall, because he's the attorney. I'm just going to try to break it down into layman's terms, because you're very detailed. And I appreciate that, that you bring that to council. So what I'm understanding is basically what you're saying brings this aesthetics advisory committee basically under, um, the direction of the Community Development Committee and the city manager. In short, is that how I understand that?
Yes, I think that's kind of, I think that makes sense.
In my layman's terms.
I'm happy that's, hopefully that's enough to get it pushed through. Look, I mean, but I think that's, if that's what you're saying, you're, you're a holdup. I think that's enough. I don't think that's a hindrance. I think that's still, it, it still gets us to the end. We want an advisory committee and just it work, it's still working with council. I think that's pretty, really efficient.
And just.
So in other words, the Community Development Committee that actually accept or reject the recommendation of this committee, right?
Again, if that's the will of council, when that's how it's written.
Yeah, I must, let me interject here, but we must remember that committees such as our council committee don't have any voting authority in committees. These committees that we threw, that we set up are just committees that you, collective as a council, will direct those committees to act. Committees don't have an authority. Now, the advisory committee are, would be, they can work with the subcommittee, but they can also report to council, just like your planning is on. They report. The governing body is this seven members here. There's nothing that can occur in any committee or any advisory without coming back to this council. So even if we put that in there, the advisory, because it will be a advisory committee, they can request come before council and make a report. But to receive our reject is we own this council, because if you look at your governing laws, there's nothing that we can do as a council to actually delegate authority to anyone. You know, we cannot even delegate one person of this council to make a decision for the whole board. And when you have a subcommittee made up of three people, remember there's no authority. There's none in your subcommittee. So we can write it as that, but knowing that these two, the subcommittee and the inner vice committee can work together, that that virus committee can report to council, because its subcommittee is, this committee is that's my last one here to the next election. Chair recognizes, oh, yeah, Chair recognizes Councilman, you're failing and following that, you recognize.
I have a question, Scotty, just to make sure if I'm clear and I understand what, uh, just to reassert what the mayor is saying, that the three committees that were set up, that was established following the retreat of, and, and each one would be made up of three council members. It, it's my understanding, and Mr. Peterson, and certainly you can comment if that's, if I'm not stating it incorrectly. But my understanding is anything that those three committees come up with is only going to be a recommendation. It's going to be, now, it may be a recommended ordinance, it may be a recommended resolution. It may be a recommendation of, that is neither an ordinance or a rec, a, a resolution, but would take some other thing. But three members of council, no matter who they are, cannot make a decision on anything. That it, it'll only be in the form of a recommendation. Is, is that?
That is correct.
Okay. And what I hear from Councilman McCall is addressing concerns from, uh, Councilman Braddock is that it would operate with and through the commission, this, uh, uh, Community Redevelopment Committee. But again, regardless of what comes out of the, the citizens advisory committee, and it goes to the, uh, Community Redevelopment Committee, it's only going to come to us in the form of a recommendation either way. And then it's this council, all seven of us, that have the final say on what we opt to do or not do. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing that the questions are discussion. We have a amendment on, on the floor with a person in fact. Seeing that there's no discussion, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, so we just have voted and received the amendment. Let directly flag that bill number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one passes first reading based upon the amendment as stated for Councilman McCall. Next, we have.
I think you have another step. Again, from all rules aspect, now that you had the amendment passed, you now need to have the council vote on the ordinance as amended, the whole ordinance as amended.
Yeah. So for our next, and Jim, you're welcome to stay in case we're having a question for the next one. Now, as we've just had that amendment, which was voted, funded, received, now we'll have bill number twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-one as first reading, based upon the amendment voting. Do we, do we have a motion?
So.
Do we have a second? So we have a motion in a second. Any additional discussion? Do you know the discussion? Let, let's go for our question. All those in favor, aye. In a false name. All right. Let us take the bill number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one as passed first reading as amended. Next, we have bill number twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two for first read. And now it's to amend chapter two of the City of Florence Code of Ordinance by adding additional sections to article number three to establish a sustainability advisory committee. Do we have a motion?
Well, uh, so.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, Chair will recognize Councilwoman Barnes, followed by Councilman McCall, followed by Councilman Braddock.
Well, I, I, I just wanted to guess, were you going to, because I'm going to ask the question. It, are we going to do the same thing as we just did?
Yeah, I was trying to do, I think.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, and I jumped in. I'm sorry.
Chair recognizes Councilman McCall.
So I think that's the, you know, again, we, we all want to see, you know, let's get this thing passed. Um, and I think that's suitable for all parties of council here. That's the exact same, is it not the exact same sections? Uh, this will be section B and C. Should say work with and through the Community Redevelopment Committee of Council and the city manager. And then section E, um, so B, C, and E for this one. Session E will say that the consent of city council, again, upon recommendation of the Community Redevelopment Committee of Council. Um, I should have read it out loud, I'm sorry. Excuse me. One second, let me get. One second. I guess everybody got section, yeah, but me, you know, so. So basically, this add, we're going to add in with the consent of city council, upon recommendation of the Community Redevelopment Committee of Council. And the same thing that's added in the first ordinance, we just added, um, to this one as well. And I think it encompasses what we all want to have accomplished on this, um, council here. And I think it's enough for us to get it passed. Special motion.
We have a motion on this floor. So we have a motion in this second. Now, we can be ready for the discussion.
Um, only question I have is, like you just said, Madam Mayor, in two years, we, um, we're going to have to reestablish these three committees. Is that how I understand it? You're at the next election cycle. We'll have to reestablish them. And so if they're not reestablished, then they would be removed from that section. And if they are reestablished, then they would, um, they would stay consistent. Is that, so how I understand it?
The committees of council, assuming, uh, if council members, current council members are not here, then those committees wouldn't have to be reestablished. The committees before you now, uh, those would not have to, because that's by ordinance. And again, those are committees of citizens.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is the positioning of it, so is there a way that we would reestablish these committees and keep them in that same position of oversight alongside the city manager? That is possible to reinstate those and keep those in that position, correct?
Well, yes, if you, if you add, as, as Councilman McCall has, the council votes on that, then that becomes the ordinance. And that's how it begins for, unless it, you know, it's changed by then.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
So does that make, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Does that make the three, um, committees, permanent committees with ordinance? Because for them to have the ordinance and then the other co, um, committees are at heart committees. How does that work?
The, you know, I might have to call Jim to help me. This actually, on this ordinance, do not change the formation of the council committees that were established in our last meeting. As was discussed at that time, those are council committees that are established. Of course, this ordinance references one of those council committees. And as long as that council committee exists in the future, then this ordinance would say that this committee would work with and through, if this amendment passes, would work with and through that council committee. This committee, just like the other one, is very clear in this proposed ordinance that this is a citizens advisory committee, has no decision-making authority, is to get citizens' input up and to city council. Under the current structure of our city council, this ordinance is doing that with and through the Community Development Committee of Council. So this doesn't change those council committees at all.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? We're ready for the question. All those favor signify by saying aye. Opposed like fine. We have the amendment which has passed. So at this time, we will be voting on the amendment to zip deal number twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two. Do we have a, a motion for the amendment?
So move.
Certainly.
Motion, motion and seconded it, represent now Councilwoman Moore and McCall. Is there any discussion? If there's no question, special we call for the question. All those in favor, aye. Those whole lights on. Next, we recruit, let directly flow, reflect that bill number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two has passed first read as amended. Bill number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three's for first reading is an ornament, or, excuse me, is an ordinance to amend chapter two of the City of Florence Code of Ordinance by adding additional section to article number three to establish the public safety citizens review board. We have a motion, we have a second. And at this time, we do have a citizen signed up to, um, speak upon this. So we will call the speaker. And either we can, um, let's go in there, council will, Scotty Davis, give us the information. And then we will call our guest for Ms. Brenda Dutcher to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This ordinance establishes an independent public safety review board that will be empowered to consider larger policy issues relative to the public safety departments and to hear specific concerns from the public. Again, this bill is sponsored by Councilwoman McCall.
So at this time, we've been called for Ms. Brenda Dutcher to speak on audience number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three to Public Safety Citizens Review Committee. Is that your, you can.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you. Um, I tried to read up on the agenda and minutes of the meetings to kind of get a background of exactly what this was actually being presented as. So I apologize if some of my questions may seem redundant that you've already discussed. Um, but as far as bringing this review board open like this, I know that you guys had a survey that you had done previously, which I think is great, um, to, to really met, or to really dive into the concerns of, um, of our city. And law enforcement needs modernizing from equipment to communication relationships. You guys agreed to a hundred percent. Um, our law enforcement is fully and professionally developed and operating at a high level was a hundred percent. And, um, crime is a growing concern in our community was a hundred percent. So I was wanting to know what warranted this type of committee to come into our city and what kind of research and, um, statistics is that based upon? And who have you actually, I know that Greenville, Aiken, um, and there's some that are in North Carolina that had these boards. And, um, so I'm kind of, I guess it's just my concern is to see how it's going to affect our first responders, pretty much. How much our civilians are going to have as an input, um, with policies and procedures? That, that's kind of a broad spectrum there. How much our civilians are gonna have as an input, um, with policies and procedures, that, that's kind of a broad spectrum there. To say that civilians are gonna be able to come in and speak about that, or have grievances, or, um, which is great, I mean, I'm not saying that we, we should have anything masked, but I think that opens up a whole new avenue of how our first responders would be conducting themselves. Um. And then would it be made public if there was a grievance brought against a first responder? Or, you know, and, and then knowing that it would be investigated, and then the outcome of the investigation? And would their names be publicized that way? And, um. Think that's, that's pretty much where I'm starting off as.
And at this time, any member of the council have any comments or questions? You, you have Councilman Gray recognized.
Yeah, once, one, I wanna appreciate, um, you coming forward. And I had the same concerns initially, I spoke at length with Councilman McCall, I spoke with the city manager. Because, you know, supporting our police and our fire and our EMS is of top priority. Um, what really led me to support this was we had an event a couple of years ago. And, um, where, where there was a shooting involved with, with someone who wasn't on our police force, but they were, um, I can't, I can't even remember what they called. Constance, and we don't have them, we don't use them anymore in the city. But basically, the mayor and the city manager at the time was very proactive to reach out to local pastors and community, um, leaders on a Sunday, Sunday morning hours, and got together to mitigate the potential fallout. Um, to protect our community and, and to protect our police force, you know, and those involved. And so that was really, I feel like divinely put together, because it, it could have been a real bad situation. But it was kind of put together, you know, at the last minute, and it was in response. I felt like after talking to the city manager and talking to Councilman McCall, that if we, if the community knows that they have a platform to address an issue that may come up, and only God knows what may come up. You know, but if something does happen, that's potentially be very bad. And if they know that there is some format, some committee, some way for them to have their voice heard. I believe that that will mitigate the potential fallout, give us time to review it, and, um, and knowing that, and I, and I spoke with a, another local city police officer, you know, higher in rank, and he, and he was supportive as well. You know, that that could mitigate, you know, the potential for damage, and so it's for that reason that although, uh, you know, I'm one of those that voted a hundred percent, that we have the best police on force in the city of Florence, and they are properly prepared. I believe that the citizens, in the event that something bad happens, need to know that they have some, some avenue for their voice to be heard, and some way to look into situations where they don't feel like they have to go through the court of law, you know, to, or they have to riot or do anything like that to be able to address a potential issue. But, and also is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna respond. The incident that the council is referring to with the constable shooting actually happened in District One. And at that time, I was the representative for District One. So when it happened that morning at one thirty, myself and the mayor was on the phone talking about this. We talked, and being a minister myself, I told them that this was not an incident, and we go wait to Monday morning to address the public about. So me and the mayor, we talked, and we talked to our city manager and agreed to have contact with all the ministers in the area. And we brought them together because I knew that they would have time to torture. So we brought them together to talk about this, because we believe, even then, as we do now, when something occurs, it's best to get the honest truth out there in front. And so the ministers came together, the minister myself, the city manager, along with our chief, also, uh, um, our mayor. We all sat together that soon. Yeah, no, but the first meeting was not, the first meeting that morning was with us. And then we did that meeting, and from that, we had two of our council members who came to us to address the public. That would have been Councilmember Moore and also, um, Councilmember, oh, Lynn Wells. So we stood together to address an incident. So this was an incident, but, and Councilman McCall clarified me on this. That would be something that regardless of whether we have committees or not, that would be the leadership coming together to address the city and to inform the citizens of what's occurring. This particular advisory committee will serve a different purpose than that, and I, I'm going to yield to Councilwoman McCall to, yeah.
Well, yeah, and I was waiting for the discussion, but, but the main thing is, I think, I think when, when people wanna read, you know, ordinance without having the full frame of the entire spectrum of it, it can seem kinda slanted in a way, but, uh, this, this, uh, ordinance here was in a, was in works. I was letting in November, and I was in constant contact with the chief, chief, uh, Tyler, uh, since December, and we've had multiple meetings, trying to make sure that it was, um, inclusive of both parts, because the first article, I think that was kinda, uh, you know, that I, when I remember, since I was in council, it was, uh, written back in November. And it said, it was written by a Mr. Matthew Christian, who was with us today. It says, "Black and blue survey shows bruised relations between minorities and law enforcement and the people." Um, and so I think with that, we're not try, and I, I, and I contacted Chief Tyler, and I said, you know, how do we help build that trust between the neighborhoods and, and law enforcement, and, and also too, that we have, we're using both, um, the law enforcement as well as the fire department as well. How can we take the initiative out of the city and, you know, help build that trust in the gap? That's, that the survey, you know, you know, that the survey says, right? Um, and, you know, we pride ourselves on being a community policing division. Um, and one of the strong tenements of the community policing division is having, uh, independent review. Um, and this is something that is not intrusive whatsoever. Um, we, you know, we've had law enforcement approval on it, they went through it substantially and made sure that, you know, um, it's something that, you know, that helps us build that trust, you know, over time, this is something that's not gonna be done overnight. But I think we all can agree that we wanna start somewhere. All right, and I think this independent, right, review board is not intrusive whatsoever, and I think we took proper protocols to make sure that it's not, um, and I think this having to start here in Florence, I think it shows the wrong way of us just trying to build a relationship between, of help building that trust between the relationship and the, uh, the public officer, is it? So thank you.
Is there, yeah, discussion or question for Mrs. Dutcher?
I have another.
Yes, ma'am.
Back. Um, I did, I was not under the impression that it was an advisory board or committee, so that does take a different spin on it as far as, um, the legalities of it. However, with the, um, the one question I didn't get answered, and then a, a new one. Um, the question I would like answered as far as how, with the grievances that are gonna be put of into effect, and I know that you probably haven't gone through it yet, are they gonna be under like bylaws? Are they gonna have, um, you know, is it going to be made public for any grievances? And is that something that would be put out there as far as research? And then the second part would be, um, what is the criteria for this board? And how, what would, because I know that some have had, you have to be thirty years old and certain, you know, protocol as far as what their background is, um, things like that, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, let me do this, make those questions that you're asking will be in this particular ordinance, so I'm gonna ask that, Mr. Davis, could you read and state those highlighted parts of that, or?
The, the question about the public, generally speaking, when we have meetings, uh, in all of the boards, they're public, unless we go into executive session. I think this ordinance speaks to that, uh, we will go into executive session there with those. Uh, so that information wouldn't, once it's in executive session, wouldn't come back out publicly.
Meaning the officer of first responders' name would be in the first meeting and then would be held? Or is that being, not be bringing up at all, and then going into the executive meeting where it would be confidential?
Yes, it, it's not our intent to publicize an officer's name. Uh, there, we are working, we will be working in conjunction again with the, the police department and the fire department. We will have members of those departments on, on that committee as well. Uh, there, there'll be non-voting members, uh, there. We are asking that whenever someone has a complaint, that they do follow through with management. So it does go up the chain of command first, so it should go to the police chief first before coming to this board. They don't have resolution there, then they can seek through our human resources department to go through and utilize this board. Uh, the board will determine if something warrants action. Uh, so they will have a, a preliminary investigation to determine if, if, if the complaint warrants action to bring forth the, the rest of the board. That board then will go into executive session to discuss those issues. And they'll, the board will make a recommendation to the, the, uh, police chief and the city manager there. Uh, and all, all issues related to, to staff, uh, stops at the city manager level, so he'll have uh, that determination to, to take whatever action he deems necessary, uh, with the information that's provided to him.
Chair recognizes, for ten.
Yes, uh, thank you for your very thoughtful questions and probing questions. Uh, citizen input like you're giving is, is a beautiful thing, and we appreciate it, because it's not easy to get up there and to do that. So thank you so much for doing that. Uh, but I did wanna just reaffirm in, in your point, and, and, and Mr. City Manager, if you'd like to speak to that as well. I think the critical thing is, it's not, i- i- it is, at the end of the day, to advise the city manager. This whole process goes, because the city manager is the one that's in charge of all personnel for the city. They all work for him, he works for us. And, uh, so, your understanding, and I know you worked extensively, and Chief Highbar, I know you did as well as other members of staff with uh, Councilman McCall over several months to the creation of this, but, uh, and, and the mayor as well on this, so, uh, if you'd like to speak to that, uh, Randy, I'd appreciate it.
Well, pri- primarily, the, the, the benefit, if you will, for the city, for, for me, as the city manager, is it provides the opportunity for a, another set of eyes, uh, to, to look at a, a situation, or to, to look at a, a innocent or complaint. And that allows me to, to make a decision based not solely on internal information, but a little extra on information. So the, the better informed I am, obviously, the better decision hopefully I make. Uh, so I think there's a, a benefit that the, the committee does not have the ability to, to mandate punishment or, or mandate exoneration. Uh, that, that still lies with, uh, Chief Tyler and myself. Uh, but it does give the, the, the public the opportunity to have uh, which probably not the right attorney, I mean, but, but basically has the, 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 gives the public the ability to have their case or issue heard by, by peers, uh, and then to, to make some recommendations to the city, so. Uh, that's the, the way that, that I've approached the, the, uh, the community, as we, as we've discussed this over the last six months or so, uh, and, uh, I see the benefit in it from, from that aspect.
Questions, I see.
Can I start your? Statement, just to end with. Um, so I appreciate you, um, going into further detail with that. Um, I do have a better understanding of it, I do also like the other side of it too, not just the civilian side. Or, or from a, a first responder side, but from the civilian side, to know that, um, some, you hear a lot across, uh, all around the world with things that are going on right now. A lot of things were dropped and just never followed up on, whether it be, you know, lack of staffing, or, um, just no follow-up process. But it sounds like that this won't let that ball drop. And that's, I think that's great for the city of Florence, because we do have such a, a reputation here that they have upheld, um, to have several, um, loving protests that have gone through and done an outstanding job of that as far as civilian citizens and first responders. Um, so I appreciate the review board, knowing that it is an advisory, um, makes me feel a little bit satisfied, so I appreciate it, so thank you.
Well, thank you for being here for us today, I do wanna assure you that the actions that we take as a council, we are driven to be sure that they are actions that's really for the citizens. Because the work that we are doing today is to set the platforms for the future of the city. So thank you for coming for us, and I'm glad that we're able to answer the questions, because this is stated, this is the process that started the latter part of last year when Councilman McCall was elected, and I sat down with him, Mr. Davis, and he got involved, rolling. And from him rolling there, meeting with our chief city manager, getting inputs from the fire department, that is really a joint process. And I'm pleased that you're a citizen, took notice, and took the time to ask the question, I'm sure that Councilman McCall appreciate that you're firm.
Sure.
That is a correction, and where we want to go. But thank you again, I do invite you at any time that you see anything you want, that you have questions, please come to us, because we are better guided when citizens speak to what they desire for us to. Thank you so much, thank you. At this time, we do have a motion in this second, we had our public, um, input. Do the council have any questions or concerns at this time, go for the discussion. All right, hearing that we have a motion in the second, all those in favor please signify, I.
Aye.
In a poll's name. Let us state that bill number twenty twenty one dash twenty two that's passed first read. Next, we're entered to, uh, introduction of resolution. And resolution number twenty twenty one dash sixteen will be a resolution to authorize the mayor and the city council to execute a community development block grant mitigation CDVG dash MIT subsidiary agreement between the city of Florence and South Carolina Disaster Recovery Office to fund an infrastructure improvement project that will mitigate the impact of future disasters. Do we have a motion? So, do we have a second? This is the motion is second, we're not here from Mr. Douglas.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, city staff did make application, um, for a CDVG mitigation grant. This was through the Office of Disaster Recovery with the state of South Carolina. And, uh, we made total, uh, application for three projects, we were awarded two of them, um, totally, uh, a little over four million dollars. Uh, these include an McQueen Street infrastructure project and a Cedar Street infrastructure project for stormwater improvements. And a- as part of that, the, the scope of the McQueen Street project in- involves the upgrading of stormwater infrastructure, that includes pipes, outlets, dungeon boxes in the vicinity of McQueen Street that goes from, um, uh, North McQueen up around, um, Marion or, or so, um, crosses back over Garland, then goes through downtown and all the way down to Tim Rock Park. And that involves the main McQueen Street front line, as well as being a lateral that, that, that feed in from that water shed. So that's some aging infrastructure, it's, it's a good opportunity to upgrade a bunch of that. It also involves the daylighting or, or restoration of a portion of, of Doe Branch, uh, which is essentially the stream that feeds into Doe Branch and Tim Rock Park. So, um, that, that's good, and it will, it will also offer the opportunity to restore a, 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 what is currently a piped stream, uh, a portion of that. Uh, the Cedar Street infrastructure project, uh, involves Cedar Street, a portion of South Irby Streets, a commercial corridor, as well as portions of the Tim Rock Park neighborhood. And the two projects work together, and the Cedar Street, um, project feeds into the main truck line into the McQueen Street, so the two projects work very closely together, which is, I think, why they were both awarded that state. So, um, this essentially gives, um, the mayor and, and city council, uh, the authority to execute this. And of, of course, staff will work it in the process, the, the project's anticipated to take approximately three years to complete. So, um, and hopefully, once executed, we should be able to immediately begin procurement and, uh, application to the project.
We have motion is second, we now have a session, Chair recognizes, for ten.
Jerry, just for clarity purposes, because earlier, uh, we talked about the, uh, bond that was presented in stormwater projects there. These are not the same projects that we were talking about earlier. These are, would be projects in addition to the projects that we talked about for four and a half million dollars, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the, so anything, any of these projects that we can get done in the context of this overall comprehensive study, which is a three-year study, so during the three-year time period that the study's gonna be going on, the work on these particular projects will have been funded, but not through the bond, they will have been funded through a grant.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
And it's a great opportunity to, to get an extra project.
Well, can I also, on behalf of council, encourage you to go get more grants? Lots and lots and lots of grants, because we have lots and lots and lots of projects that need to get, uh, thank you very much.
Do you have any other questions or discussions?
Thank you, Stuart Dudley. At this time, we have a motion in the second. If there's no further discussion, we have the question, all those are favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like aye. Let me know, um, recognize the fact that resolution number twenty twenty-one dash sixteen has passed. Next, we have resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, a resolution to proclaim the month of June as homeownership month in the city of Florence. And we will recognize Mr. Dudley.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Bravo.
And let me do this, do we have a motion?
Oh.
In a second? Motion in a second, now we have to do that.
Thank you, from stormwater to homeownership, over and over again.
All right.
Uh, the, um, president did proclaim, uh, June, on June first, uh, June as national homeownership month. And, um, the, you know, we as staff believe the, um, the city should also proclaim, uh, June as homeownership month. Uh, as many of you know, owning, owning a home is at the heart of the American dream and it's, um, most people's, um, biggest source of wealth that they can pass on to their children and grandchildren. Uh, it provides an opportunity for all Americans to work together, provide family with tools and information they need to overcome, uh, barriers to homeownership. And, um, you know, oftentimes neighborhoods where homeownership is predominant, we have stronger, uh, neighborhoods, civic-minded residents, better schools a- and less crime. So, uh, uh, we, we do, um, or would like to recognize June as, as homeownership month and to recognize the enduring value of homeownership and to recommit ourselves to helping more Americans realize that dream.
We have a motion, let me, do we have any discussion?
Here are none and ready for the question, all those are favorite.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed like aye. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Next, we have resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, a resolution to amend the conditional grant agreement dated November the twenty-seventh, twenty thirteen between the city of Florence and New Florence Investment LLC. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion in a second? We can now hear, please do.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, before you this afternoon, you have this resolution. This is related to the conditional grant agreement with New Florence investment. This references the Crest property. As the original investment was intended, as is on your agenda sheet, the original investment was intended to be in the range of ten to eleven million dollars. Uh, it was not quite that amount. And then when the tax assessor, uh, assessed it for property tax purposes, the assessment is only in the range of about three million dollars. As the grant agreement was originally formatted, the grant was in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the estimation being that the city would be repaid over a period of seven years by eighty-five percent of property taxes from that investment. Since the, the total investment wasn't as much as was originally anticipated, um, in order to make this grant work, we need to extend the payback period from a seven-year period to an eighteen-year period. Now, in exchange for that, the investor has agreed not to appeal any future assessment by the tax assessor. Every five years, the county has to go through the reassessment process and some of these process, properties obviously increase in value and increase for property tax value. Uh, the investors agreed not to question those reassessed values in the future until the district expires as currently formatted in twenty forty-six. And that concludes my report.
You've heard a report. Is there any discussion or any question?
If not, at this point, you have called for a question, all those for our favor, signify aye.
Aye.
All those opposed like aye. Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Please let the record, Mr. Dudley, let the record reflect that resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eighteen has passed. Um, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash nineteen has been requested to be deferred. Next, we have resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty. Um, the resolution to designate ten on-street parking spaces located on the north side of the four hundred block of West Evans along the trenches of the McNamara Federal Building as U.S. Marshal parking only. Do we have a motion?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. At this time, we were here from Clint.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Again, it has been requested by the Florence Office of U.S. Marshals to designate, uh, ten of the parking spaces that are recently, uh, built, directly addressed to the property as designated as U.S. Marshal's park only. I'll bring the slide. So currently, uh, prior to the street scapegoat, the, the portions of the street outlined in yellow, which is similar to what we have out there along the curb, designates these parking areas as no parking. So right now, the only area in which anyone can park along the street legally is located on North McQueen, um, just north of the Stokes Eye Care, uh, building. And with the, uh, and that, those all will remain with exception to West Evans, which is the additional twenty spaces located here in front of Millen Building. And, uh, this is, uh, right here where it's worded, Millen Federal Building. That is where the building currently sits. And these, uh, two sets of five spaces, it has been requested by the marshal's office to designate those as U.S. Marshal's parking only. Um, should be noted that, um, we will have to, uh, establish a resolution, uh, further, uh, after this decision to establish the, uh, regulation of the parking spaces along the south side, the additional twenty spaces. Um, right now, we have, uh, two hours parking designated in the one hundred and two hundred blocks of West Evans and the one hundred blocks of North and South Darden Street. And, um, we did recently have a parking study conducted by C.D.M. Smith back in twenty sixteen, uh, that, um, did a review of all our parking within the downtown area and promoted as we redevelop these streets to designate on-street parking, uh, to accommodate different, different uses such as Millen Federal. And this concludes that.
Let's have a report, we have a question from council. So no discussion, no question?
Yeah.
We have.
That's the research, that's the report we said.
Well, okay, this time we have, we were, chair recognizes councilwoman more than councilwoman one.
Um, I don't have a problem with what you just already said, even though I'm a little bit, but I pretty much know what you talked about. My problem with downtown parking and people have been asking about this somewhat, there's not enough handicap park. Because if you go into the federal building, there's no place to park. I mean, some people just can't walk there.
The, uh, typically the handicap spaces are, uh, again, because of our, our street being a historic street built roughly a hundred years ago, the, there was not a lot of accommodation made for handicap spaces on the street. And it's, uh, often, uh, it's often a very difficult thing to make work with the, with the grades. So, uh, the building itself typically has onsite handicap parking spaces and I believe they have multiple, uh, all, all sites are required a certain amount.
But it's the back, right?
That's, that's great.
You can't go through back anymore, you have to come all the way around.
The, well, that will be something that we can discuss with the U.S. Marshal in that office building. But again, that is, uh, that is essentially the, the responsibility of the federal building to supply those.
And that's not just for that building, but in general, I had a conversation with a couple of people and they said it's like discriminating that, that they, you don't have parking for this. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess that was, um, some of my saying, um, it's hard enough to get in there. And, um, would it add to the, the problem of parking when we have the convention center and more coming downtown? Which means we'll need more parking. I know we'll have a parking deck. However, um, it's, it's hard enough to get in there. And then, and can we make it where it's a timeframe for when the marshals are there? Are they there all the time or is that space going to be limited? Or is it never parking?
He, they have made the request to fully limit it to only U.S. Marshals.
So weekends or whenever it's not in use, it's just not in use?
That's correct.
Okay.
Chair recognizes for ten.
Uh, first off, the question about the, having a conversation with them about whether they want to let us use the back entrance, I don't think that's the path. I mean, they have said, they have changed and, and the entrances is what it is. And I think we just have to accept that that's what the federal government has decided for security reasons. And so it, it is the front entrance, but now you have to park in the back and have to come around. So I think that's, is what it is. I do think, uh, the councilwoman's comments about having access for those who have, uh, difficulties and disabilities and all, I, I don't think it's a good idea to turn these parking spaces over. As we all know, on-street parking is precious. It is precious, precious, precious. And we are, we have been working very, very hard over many years now to develop a comprehensive, thoughtful approach to parking and to take ten extremely valuable par- on-street parking spots and to say, and essentially they're going to be empty. That's what's going to happen. It's not like they're going to be parking, the, the marshal service is going to be using those. It's essentially going to be just a no parking zone for ten spots when, in fact, they were really are needed, uh, for the citizens of our community. So I, I'm, appreciate their requests. I respect their requests, but I, in my opinion, we have a duty to our citizens. Uh, and, and, and my opinion, our duty is to keep those, uh, parking spots available. And I would encourage us to look at trying to see if there's any opportunity to have handicap parking in any of those spots. Um, if that is something that is doable, I would certainly encourage exploring that because I think tho- those would be very helpful for us.
Yeah, in the, in the streets, all of the sidewalks and the new ramps installed along the, the whole corridor are handicap accessible, built to ADA standards. It is, um, it is, it is typically very difficult to reconstruct, uh, handy, handicap designated on-street parking due to the requirements and just the physical limitations as far as the, the area. So often that is, um, that is held off-site. But the sidewalks themselves, all the access around there is handicap accessible.
Chair recognizes councilwoman more.
So are you telling me that it's not important for someone that may have a handicap or disability? It's okay that they can't come and enjoy downtown? They can't go to a restaurant? They can't do anything downtown because we don't care enough about them to make some handicap parking?
No, we, we do make handicapped parking, parking spaces. They are established off, typically off of the street. I think in downtown because of the historic streets, uh, are pretty limited. We have a few on the two hundred block of West Evans. But within our surface, surface parking lots throughout the ones that we lease or own, including the parking deck, they have multiple handicap parking spaces throughout.
The only place that I see downtown with, um, the handicap parking, fifteen hundred acres. They have these spaces right here.
Yes.
We're, we're actually telling people we don't care anything about them. I mean, there should be at least one, if not more. I would say at least one and everybody, at least.
We'll, we'll certainly look at how we can accommodate more of that.
Does that be possible?
Yeah.
Chair recognizes councilwoman, right?
So they're asking now and we're going to tell them no. What's going to be their next step? Now's an ask, I'm just wondering what, what's going to happen after asking.
The, uh, that's a good question. Uh, you know, their, their letter and their request obviously is, uh, is focused around their safety, security concerns of their building. Uh, what is next? I don't know. As we, as, as we've discussed internally, we've had the, the same conversations, it's very difficult. Uh, you know, the parking's in the rear, but their entrance is in the front. Uh, we will more than likely have additional discussions with them, uh, bringing forward these, these other concerns, whether or not that goes anywhere. I can't stand policy there. But we will continue to talk to them and try to resolve whatever issues they believe, they believe exist and move forward from there.
But they don't have any, I don't know, for lack of a better word, eminent domain. They don't have any actions that they can take.
That's correct.
Not that I'm worried.
You're a quick dancer then.
I'm not.
I'm looking for my attorneys.
So can we just? We have no regulation on their side. They, um, as, as, as they redevelop, they've redeveloped the parking lot. They can, they do not have to receive any permits from the city at all, but they can move forward with products that they determine.
They, they can't impose on us, we can't impose on them.
I wouldn't go so far as to say federal government can't impose on us. Um, yeah. I've never seen a case in which they used eminent domain in a situation like this. Doesn't mean they don't exist. Um, I think a key to understand this request, and I'm not saying I necessarily agree with them, but their request is based on one thing. It's not parking space. It's not that the marshal's not parking space. Their request is based on their view that allowing parking that close to a federal courthouse is a security risk. And, and it may well be, I don't know, I'm no security expert. That's what their request is based on. I'm not saying that to say we ought to vote for it. That, that's y'all's decision. But that's what they're, I, I just don't want you all to perceive this as federal marshals wanting parking spaces for them. They came up with that idea as a way to move the parking back away from the building. It's not that they want a convenient parking space for the federal marshals. It's that they don't want anybody being able to get that close to the building. And if you look around, for example, in Columbia, we look at the federal courthouse in Columbia. Columbia worked with them and the parking spaces immediately around street parking where, excuse that, simply goes right by the side of the federal courthouse in Columbia. Those spaces along the side of that, they tell us are now restricted for the same reason, that when after nine eleven happened and after all of that, they moved everything back away from these federal buildings. So do I suspect they're going to come back to us with further requests? I suspect so. Because again, this isn't about parking. I totally agree with you all. Our post, my firm's post office box is in there and it's aggravated. And I'm perfectly healthy, I'm perfectly able to walk from the back around, but it's a hot. Particularly when it's ninety-five degrees like, like it is tonight. And, um, that's the basis of the request, it's security. They feel allowing parking there creates a security risk for that federal building.
I do want to state on behalf of our city staff and cross thirty.
I do want to state on behalf of our city staff and cross city attorney that as a council, I do want us to recognize this has not been thought of overnight. They have been in continuous communication, setting down with leaders from the federal government. But if this council at this point is not adequately comfortable with information, I would suggest and you could contemplate maybe defer, so you can have more of your questions answered. So that is an option that this council has. If you're not ready to vote for it or even told against it because you have a question about what ifs, we do have the option. I want you to understand to defer, so I know that's on the table as well. The chair now recognizes Councilwoman Sofia.
I understand the whole situation of what they're asking for is the security risk. I asked myself when I when I talked to Councilman McCall earlier, what do they need ten spaces for right in front of the building when they park inside the gate? Well, it's no different than when I was in the military and the bases blocked, all of that, all for security risks. You had the Oklahoma City bombing for the same reason. This is why they're doing it. If we don't, if we don't block that, I understand we need more parking spaces downtown. We're probably gonna have to build another parking garage. We're gonna have to be able to figure out how to reevaluate our handicap access parking spaces inside our historic district. But to allow somebody to be able to park in front of that building that could potentially have a lethal threat to that federal building is not a good idea. So I side with with the marshals in blocking those ten spaces for the federal.
The chair recognizes.
I'm all about, my voice is leaving me. I'm all about making a deal if I can. So if we can make a deal on this, can you please? Uh, can we, I'll I'll make a motion that we defer this to the next council meeting. And if there is a way that we can block it off, I guess like on the weekdays, from, you know, doing court hours, um and this still happens on the weekends, I think that's, if we're trying to drive traffic towards that area, people are gonna park in those spots. Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in the car too. So um if there is a way that we can see, can we ask them where they'll be amenable to? And I guess we can probably say, well, it'll have to be all ten, I'm sorry, all ten spaces from nine to five during Monday through Friday, um and then allowing it to come back to the city over the weekends. And I think that's something that's very reasonable, but I'll ask that you request and you talk to them about that first. So I'm making a motion that we defer um this resolution into the next council.
Do we have a second? Is the proper motion by Councilman McCall second by Councilman Moore that we defer resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty? All in a club of discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Let it reflect it that the amendment of the deferral has passed. So next we have on our resolutions, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one, a resolution to honor basketball legend Ms. Pearl Moore on her introduction into the Naismith Naismith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame. And do we have a motion? Some of, sorry, motion by Councilman McCall, second by Councilwoman Barnes. We can now hear from Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. As stated, we have a resolution by the City of Florence to formally honor women's basketball legend Pearl Moore on her induction to the Naismith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame. If you give me a second, like the steel summer, uh Councilwoman's more thunder, a little bit of history of Miss Pearl Moore. She's a four-time All-American. She's the all-time leading scorer in women's college basketball history. Scoring Councilman Javale over four thousand sixty-one points. At FMU, she had thirty, she averaged thirty point six points a game. Michael Jordan long. During that time, there's actually no three-point line. So those numbers would certainly increase in today's game. Uh in May, and she also played with the New York Stars professional basketball team. Uh in May of this year, she was selected to be inducted to the Naismith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame. Uh she's a local Florin team, a graduate of Wilson High School, and we're certainly proud uh and honored to to uh have this resolution before you. And again, uh if that's the will of council, and again, uh Councilwoman Moore, thank you for allowing me to share those.
Oh, you can, you can actually read the resolution. I've been trying to get.
Wait for me first, see, he's heard from Councilwoman Scott, and now we're over the discussion. So recognize this possible more.
Oh, I've been trying to get Mayor for him to um have a one-on-one with her.
Listen, listen. Let's be clear.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman.
Let's be clear, Pearl is lights out. She is absolute lights out. What a joy and a privilege that we have someone who has been inducted into the Hall of Fame that is not only from here, but is still here, and whose heart is here in Florence and whose family is here in Florence. We are so, so, so fortunate. And it's a, we were one step ahead when we named the the Pearl Moore Center for the Basketball Gym. So we got a little bit of a leg up on it, but we are just so fortunate to have her here, and by all means, we're all so excited. Pat. Um, yeah, I I'll I'll have a conversation with Kermit about that. I'm not gonna take on Pearl.
Are there, is there?
I'll talk to him. I'll talk with him.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Barnes.
Um, I am, I am honored. Um, I know um Councilwoman Moore is is also, this is her sister-in-law, but um when I was in the ninth grade, Pearl Moore was my volleyball coach and basketball coach. Um, I was privileged to be on varsity in the ninth grade at Wilson High School, and she was my coach. And so for me now to be able to be a part of this, I am honored. Um, I know she is bad to the bone. And so, um, kudos.
You know, statement. Chair recognizes Councilwoman.
And it's more understanding that she's only a third person from South Carolina to get into this Naismith Basketball Hall of Fame. And that's such an honor for her. And you pretty much said everything in resolutions, it's in the resolutions. I really don't have to read it. And she can get it at another time. But you all go into all city council members, where we see the invitation to that induction along with our city manager, who also did the invitation. Um, so could they, they asked for your emails, so I sent all emails out to them. And it it is exciting, and I really wanna go also. I'm hoping that I can go there in September and and she already told me that some of her resolutions, she has so many things over the years that she's going to give us some things to hang in the Pearl Moore Basketball Center, because her jersey's already there and we're gonna hang some other things though.
Is there another discussion? Well, I'm gonna make a comment, being a co-over for the past administration. Um, through the community development process, one of the things that we were honored to do was I was honored to be a part, to push to have the building of a basketball center, which was really came forth from the community, it came forth from the basketball community to have the gymnasium built. When I first became a council member, um, Danny Ellaby was one of the first people from the community who said, Councilwoman, we need a basketball home. Everyone has a home set for our basketball. So that became a charge to push, to recognize that on the behalf of the community. When we did get, it took two, actually two readings to get it done. The first time, the first time it was myself, um Councilwoman um Blake and the mayor, who really wanted this to see this happen. We did not pass the first time, but the next time around, it passed. And from that, when we started to look at ideals for naming this center, Miss Moore being a graduate of Francis Marion and all the things that Mr. Davis just stated was a sound foundation why it made sense to name it after her. But not only that, Francis Marion themselves, they pushed to have it ma- named after Miss Moore. And we have the history of being able to state that this is the only city building that's named for a female in the whole city of Florence. So not only she's making history now, be going into the Hall of Fame, she made history when she became the first woman to have a building, a government building, named after her in the city of Florence. I think that this is another part of her legacy, and it's an honor to be a part of this, and thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing this resolution for, to honor such a person who's represented this city and this state in so many ways so well. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, you thank, don't thank, don't thank me, thank her.
We will thank her, but because of your actions, to have her recognized, if you wouldn't have brought that, we wouldn't have this before us today. So I think I'm grateful for her service, but thank you for you bringing this before us. And so at this point, if there's no other discussion, we have our resolution before us. The question is, all those in favor, please signify by five by saying aye. All those opposed, like sign. So it's an honor to recognize the fact that we have resolution number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one has passed, and Councilwoman Moore, do you want to read the resolution?
Well, Scotty's almost said everything, but I'll read it. Um. A resolution by the City of Florence formally honoring women's basketball legend Pearl Moore on her induction to the Naismith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame. Whereas Pearl Moore is a native of Florence and graduated from Wilson High School, where she was in the starting lineup for all four years and earned the MVP award at the nineteen seventy-five and nineteen seventy-six AA Junior Olympic Games. And whereas she continued her career at Anderson Junior College and transferred to Francis Marion University, quickly leading the Patriots team to three national championship appearances. And whereas, as a first-round draft of the women's professional basketball, Moore played professionally in the New York Stars, the St. Louis Street, and later was Venezuela on the boring pro league. And whereas her basketball prowess earned her nineteen seventy-nine SCAIAW and Women's Sports Foundation Small College Player of the Year. And in nineteen seventy-nine, South Carolina Amateur Athlete Athlete of the Year. And whereas she's a four-time All-American with a career point total of four thousand sixty-one career points, which remains the record for women's ba- college basketball and is ranked third at on the college basketball career scoring list for all levels of men's and women's college basketball. And whereas Pearl Moore was inducted into the Francis Marion Hall of Fame in nineteen ninety-two, the South Carolina Athletic Hall of Fame in two thousand, the Florence Area Athletic Hall of Fame in two thousand and six, and the Women's Basketball Hall of Fame in twenty eleven. And I was fortunate enough to be at that um induction in Tennessee also, so I'm I'm really proud of her. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Florence, the City of Florence formally commands, commends, and celebrates Pearl Moore for her incredible accomplishment in the world of women's basketball and her induction into the Naismith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame. Resolve this was the day of the fourteenth day of June twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for that. Now, at this time, we proceed to our reports to council. And first item, we have Jerry Dudley giving us a report from the planning director.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. Uh, if you recall, as a April city council meeting, uh there was a zoning uh over on Oakland Avenue and Maxwell Street before you, that was uh probably tabled at that time. And part of the directive of city council was to go back to planning commission uh to discuss, to discuss the commercial, or or yes, the commercial reuse district, um which is what this lot was proposed to itself. Uh specifically, the um retail portions of that and and centered around alcohol uh on-premise consumption and off-premise consumption of alcohol. And uh this directive was relayed to planning commission at their May meeting. And uh following up, um staff mailed out uh the uh information or excerpts from the Unified Development Ordinance uh that were specific to the commercial reuse, such that the planning commission could begin studying uh those sections of the code. Uh during that time, we, you know, we asked planning commission to provide us with any feedback uh or suggestions. Staff did begin researching at at that point and putting together some suggestions uh such that we could craft a draft a amendment to the Unified Development Code uh in relation to the commercial reuse district. Uh these uh suggestions were presented as a draft amendment at the June planning commission meeting, uh at which time there was some debate. Uh and ultimately, planning commission chose to defer that another month, uh because it was a lot to digest. Uh, we staff had put together a pretty long list of suggestions. Uh there was concern over a planning commission, uh obviously over protect protection of adjacent residential uses, but also about unintended consequences of putting rules into place because uh commercial reuse not only, uh you know, it would not only affect this particular lot, but lots all over the city, so. Uh at this time, that uh amendment is deferred until next month, uh such that planning commission can again uh take a longer look at it and and provide staff with uh further direction on how to proceed.
Thank you for that, Dave. Next on our agenda, we have, we would have.
Um Jerry, do we need to go back? That's saying those meetings for a couple of years at the water treatment plant for unified development. Now it seems like everything that we did, we're undoing. Do we need to go back and send those readings two more years to re-undo what we did and redevelop it again because it's not working? All the work that we put into it is for nothing.
Well, a Unified Development Ordinance or or any zoning code evolves over time. And and we did, and even the old code, when we were under the old zoning ordinance, that was constantly amended. I mean, in in the time I was here working under the the old code, we amended that a number of times. So I I think any zoning code is gonna require an amendment a- as it goes along.
But when it went back to you, this particular project, we didn't want the the CR, and now it's right back in our face again. So we didn't want it then, we still don't want CR, because anything, so many different things to be placed there for this CR. Because I went online and I listened to the meeting of planning commission, and nothing was ever mentioned about, along with anything, we went back to class. That's not going to happen.
Chair recognizes.
Okay, uh yeah, I thought, I thought the intent was for us to find a way for um existing narcophones to somehow comply with the uh uh the unified code. Is that, am I correct on that? Well, we're not all, and not all existing narcophones, just that one tick, I thought. Is that the original? That's the intent of what we're trying to do, right? I thought that was the intent from April meeting.
Well, it's it's difficult. I mean, again, you can't have spot zoning or or have zoning code written for one particular case. It it would apply, you know, once the Unified Development Ordinance is amended, it would, it would then apply to any similar or like situation moving forwards, so um we had understood the intent was to take a closer look at the commercial reuse district.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Next, we will proceed to appointments to boards and commission. First item we have is judicial review ad hoc meeting. And at this time, we are entertaining a motion so we can hear from um Mr. Davis.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Madam Mayor, the members of council. Uh as stated, there are several boards and committees uh that we need to have appointments. Our first committee is our judicial review ad hoc committee. Council traditionally appoints an ad hoc committee to appoint or recommend appointment of our part-time judges. Uh there are two-year appointments, their appointments are up. We have five vacancies for that. Uh and again, there are two-year appointments, and if it's the will of council, uh the mayor generally appoints that ad hoc committee of council members uh to work with staff to look at those appointments. I've spoken with uh the existing judges, they have all expressed their desire to stay. I've spoken with uh, the existing judges, they have all uh, expressed their desire to stay on board there, so we do have that information for you. And we have another appointment, uh, of the, the late Honorable Jeff.
At this time, we've had a motion in the second, that we have received a partner for the Judicial Review Ad-Hoc Committee. And after study, um, those appointments will be. Councilman McCall, Councilman Schofield, and Councilwoman Pat Gibson Highmore. Is there any discussion? If not, the question, all those in favor, please signify by aye. Aye, and those, any like signs, nay. Letting know that the appointments to the Judicial Review Ad-Hoc Committee will be Councilman McCall, Schofield, and Councilwoman Pat Gibson Highmore. And next we have our Committee for Community Development Committee chaired by Councilwoman Barnes. And do we have a motion, or?
Still move second.
Motion, do we have a second? Councilwoman Barnes, do you have your appointments for your committee?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Um, I would like to appoint um, Councilman. Man McCall and Councilwoman Pat Gibson Highmore. And myself.
Um, you've heard, you have the motion, we have heard the appointments, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the appointments which were made by the Councilwoman Barnes is already appointed to this committee. Other additional appointments of Councilman McCall and Councilwoman Pat Gibson Highmore, please signify by saying aye. Aye, if there are any opposed, like sign. Let it reflect that, so unanimously voted upon that Councilman McCall and Moore will be added to the committee chaired by Councilwoman Barnes. Next we have the committee, which is Marketing and Public Relationship Committee, which is chaired by Councilman McCall, Councilman McCall. Can we entertain a motion? Second, second, aye. So at this time, we have Councilman McCall, do you have your appointments ready?
Yeah, I have two appointments for this board here, you know, wow, I'm not a court. Madam Mayor, I'd like to appoint, well, myself is already chaired, I'd like to appoint um, Councilman Brian Braddock. And Council Mayor Pro Tem, uh, George Bailey.
You've heard the um, nominees, is there any discussion? If not, do we have all those in favor of the appointments made by chair? Councilman McCall is presently already chairing, to have additional to himself. Councilman Braddock and Councilman Javale, all those in favor, signify by aye. Aye, all those in, let the record reflect that the Marketing and Public Relationship Committee. Will be chaired by Councilman McCall with members assisting Braddock and Councilman Javale. Next we have the Business Development Committee, which is chaired by Pro Tem Javale, and do we have a motion? Motion. We'll have a motion in the second. At this time, Councilman Pro Tem Javale, do you have your appointments ready?
Yes, move that we add to the Business Development Committee, Councilwoman Barnes and Councilman Schofield.
At this time, you've heard Councilman request for addition to himself chairing the committee that we add attend that. Councilwoman Barnes and Councilman Schofield, are you ready for the question? If you're in favor, please say aye. Like signs, nay. Let it reflect that the members have been appointed, in addition to our chairperson, David would be Barnes and Schofield. Uh, thank you members for these appointment, and do you just wanna reiterate that law would outboard and. Permission that all um, recommendations from the committee would still need to come up through the city council to be voted upon. In order to have action, so chairpersons, congratulations, committee members, we're looking forward to seeing the work that you bring forth. Out of those committees, and if there's no others, yes, no.
Um, on, could I make an announcement on the twenty-sixth of the cleanup?
Well, you know, we are, we are, start with Jim after with that, then.
Oh, you can't do that, I'm sorry.
But so, um, and you follow procedure afterward, yeah, so we've talked about it.
I am, I'm not able to do that.
Okay, and if it's coming out of committee, do we need to come before the council, so the council can support it, since it's coming out of committee, yes?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
I said it's coming out of committee, do the committee. If this will be coming from the committee, does it?
Maybe I don't understand what, what was about to be announced, my understanding is simply an event is gonna occur. That she's simply wanting to announce the event. I didn't think it was any action by council or anything, she simply wanted to announce an event. But since there's no action with council, that's not a matter of, it has to be on the agenda, it would be fine for that to be announced. Just as an upcoming event in the community.
Okay, and long as that, and that, um, any discussion or anything we bring out, long as it does not require the city to. Do any action on it, correct?
Um, on June twenty-sixth, um, you know, we, I've been working for a while now, um. With, with, with the aesthetics um, committee, and we've started working with um, Surf Flow. Um, also some other local churches, um, that will do a cleanup on June sixth. And so I'd like for all those who are interested in, um. June twenty-sixth, June twenty-sixth, June sixth is gone. For, for you, please, um, contact, contact me or any members of Surf Flow. Um, for your assistance, we do need, need, um, any assistance available.
Mayor, question? The twenty-sixth, where will everybody be gathering, what time?
Yes.
You know I'm gonna ask you detail.
Thank you, well, I need that, so, um, First Baptist on the corner of Tel Meadow and, and. Erby Street at seven o'clock that Saturday morning, we will be meeting. Um, and there will, we've got a, a pretty healthy volunteer um, group as of now. Um, um, a hundred is coming from, what's the big church out there by, by baseball?
And tennis, new spring.
New Springs, and then you have Surf Flow with, then they will have a big group, um, and then we'll have the local community coming, so. I'm, I'm just hoping that we will make this a grand event, and we look forward to any assistance from the city as well as.
On that, is there any other announcements?
I had a birthday recently.
Oh, my goodness. Well, if there's no, we entertain a motion to adjourn. If the motion is second, all those in favor, if there's no discussion, please signify by saying aye.